Do two things, one more thing here. You are all set, have a good meeting.
We're gonna call this January 11th meeting of the Situate zoning board of appeals to order. This meeting is regarding the proposed 40B project at 279 through 281 Old Oak and Bucket Road. Before we begin, just a couple of things to note, this meeting is happening live in the select board hearing room and is available on Zoom for remote participation. The meeting is of course being recorded and will be broadcast on Situate television and Facebook Live. The Situate zoning board of appeals is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner, even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. Thanks everyone for being in attendance this evening. Attorney DeLeese, we don't exactly have an agenda for this hearing. We were hoping based on our collective closing and sort of understanding at our last hearing that your team would prepare a revised plan based on some of the things we were discussing, a revised report, and then Merrill Engineering, the town's peer review engineer, would have an opportunity to review that and then would have some comments and questions and that the engineers would have an opportunity to collaborate before coming back here. It seems like, and correct me if I'm wrong, your side got those revisions out to the town and the town's engineer on or about December 12th, if I remember correctly.
12th, 14th, right around there.
And unfortunately, obviously it was a rather busy time of year, we saw a revised report from Merrill just Tuesday morning. So yes, a full day ago. So I have to imagine you haven't had an opportunity to review that in depth and revise your reports and plans accordingly.
We've reviewed it, but we haven't yet revised. And I can get into a suggestion on how to deal with that.
Okay. I imagine your suggestion is going to include the engineers sitting together, whether that's virtually or in person, and going over some things or trading emails and coming to at least a little bit of a consensus on a few of these points prior to the next hearing.
Yes, definitely.
What I would suggest, since we're all here and we've probably blocked out more than 15 or 20 minutes from our collective schedules, is that we take a quick run through Merrill's letter. I think we have a representative from Merrill here remotely. I have some questions on the content of Merrill's report that sort of be the advocate for the layman when it comes to stormwater discharge and leaching fields and things like that. I want to make sure that I, the collective I, the town, the abutters, the rest of this board, understand what the engineers are going back and forth about. Enough so that we can decide how much we all care if you and the town's engineers don't end up on exactly the same page. I also want to clarify with Merrill a couple of things that they spoke quite a bit about in the report and I'm not so sure we needed them to. I could be wrong there, maybe they didn't need to. I'd like to flush some of that out in this hearing while we're all here and give my fellow board members the opportunity to second my questions or say no, I think we do or don't care about those, vice versa, to give Merrill and your side even more to discuss or less to discuss, as the case may be, when you put your heads together, hopefully this time before the next meeting.
Okay, so.
Does that make sense? Do you see any downsides to that?
No, it does make sense. It just maybe it's just a few things to add to it.
Absolutely.
Okay, so. They didn't win the lottery last night, so unfortunately I'm here tonight.
Yes. Something, something makes me think you would have remembered your professional responsibility and still would have been here.
Yes.
You just would have been smiling even more than you normally do.
Exactly. The last hearing was November 1st and at that hearing we gave a quick little overview of what the most recent revision, substantive revision to the plan was, which was the reduction in the number of units from 32 to 24, 24 three-bedroom cottages. So since then, as you indicated, we provided a revised plan, revised drainage calculations, revised responses to the town's consultant. In the consultant report that came back to us Tuesday, there were engineering issues and questions. And then there were some comments that had to do with architecture and landscape design.
Yes.
We did not submit since the last hearing a revised architectural plan set or a revised landscape plan. We, we had been working on them, so we have them. And if the board wants, we can do a five-minute overview on the landscape, which I think might be helpful just visually for the public because it's been a while, just to see the 24 units and how they're laid out on a colored plan essentially.
Sure.
And then during the course of the conversation, if the board wants, we can show you our landscape plan. But we will provide that as well. In any event, we'll provide both plans that's to the board immediately following tonight's hearing, okay? So and then I think I provided you with draft waivers. We revised that to include waivers from Board of Health regulations, which were unintentionally omitted. And I have those for you as well.
Sure.
My thought process kind of overall from 10,000 feet up is obviously we're gonna need to continue tonight's meeting. But I'd like to try and if we could have us in a position where we could, we can have a vote at the following meeting. And I don't know if that's something, you know, that the board thinks is viable or not. But I think if we have a working session with engineers at the conclusion of this meeting, we probably will be able to. We've looked at the document, we think we should be able to be responsive to most of all of the concerns. We should be able to come to a consensus. And then as far as waivers are concerned, if you wanted to go back and forth with me on any questions concerning those waivers, I'm more than happy to do that, to kind of position it such that we really narrow down the issues to the next meeting. So that's pretty much it. And if that sounds okay, then what I'd like to do is have Jeremy, our architect, just put up his plan, run through the design set, five-minute overview, and then we'll go right to however you want to handle it, whether that be our engineer or just go right to Merrill at that point.
Sure, I, we can skip to that and figure that out. But I think giving everyone a fresh look at how the project sits on the ground is a good place to start and provides a good background information for whatever we're gonna discuss. Fantastic. And I was glad.
Okay. So Jeremy, I think you're on.
Okay, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Perfect, okay, and I'm gonna share my screen. Let me know if you guys can see the cover page here.
Yep.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So again, just very quick overview, make everybody remembers where the site is. We just wanted to refresh your memory a little bit of sort of the path we've been down. This is one of our more original site layouts where we had a combination of duplexes and single families with a total of 32 units, at least in this iteration of the plan. This is the plan we shared with you, I think the last time we were in front of you guys where we went to entirely single-family detached, 24 total units. The next slide is the revised plan and it will look very similar. We made very minor modifications. I will point out the front changes and then I'll come back and point out the back changes. But if you look up along Old Oak and Bucket, one of the adjustments we made, you can see here, we sort of had four units that were on the sort of south side of our entry drive, a fifth unit here along Old Oak and Bucket. Those units were back from Old Oak and Bucket, but one of the, one of the requests was to try to increase that setback and to minimize the visual density from Old Oak and Bucket to the degree we can. So now tabbing to our current plan, you will see effectively what we've done is we've removed one of the units that was here at the front of the site. So now instead of five, we really have four units that are along Old Oak and Bucket, including the one that's set back behind the entry green. Really what we did is relocated that, that unit that was here up here to this northern stretch in the previous scheme, we only had sort of two units in this area. We've gone ahead and put a third unit here. So again, basically shifted one of those units. So I'll go back now to the previous plan briefly. So again, up here you can see we had sort of two units in this zone and now we have the three. So that, one of the changes was relocating that unit. The other little shift is on the backside of the plan, in the very back along the, what is that, eastern, actually technically the southern edge because north is planned left. We had a unit back here in the corner. Mark ended up needing this corner for some other utility needs. Shifting this unit also helped open up the view towards the meadow, which we thought was beneficial. So here along the north, you can see we had, call it one, two, three, four, five, six, seven units. In the revised version, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Essentially, we shifted the unit that was on this corner up along the northern edge. Otherwise, the circulation remains as it was. Our intention to have sidewalks connecting everything through here remains as it was. We still have the central green space that serves the double duty as our primary septic area. We still have the small entry green with the little mail kiosk located just there. So by and large, the plan has not drastically changed. Mark probably wants to point out a few additional things from a technical standpoint that might have changed. Tricia should probably comment on if there's any big changes to the landscape plan. I think she was primarily trying to address some of the comments we received. But by and large, this is our revised plan and as I'm suggesting, it's not drastically different from the version you would have seen the last time we were in front of you all. Then otherwise, I still have in here the architecture, it hasn't changed, the single-family type that we've been, we've been showing previously is, is still in fact what we're referencing and intending. Happy to talk about that more if there are questions, but again, you guys have seen this a couple of times now, so I won't belabor the point. So I'll stop there if there are any questions or see if the rest of the team wanna supplement what I've suggested.
Just back to the architecture plan for a second, the layout there if you could. And so, and this is the plan for every unit in the development, correct?
It is, it is largely the way it would be for every unit in the development. The one minor variation we have is this typical condition suggests a garage that's effectively towards the street, towards the front, where you have your front door and your front porch. If I go back to our site plan, that's the condition for the majority of the units as they go back through the site. There will be a slight variation for the four units here in this front corner because we have this shared drive that actually means the garage would be in the back of the unit instead of the front of the unit. So we will have a slightly different set of plans and elevations in order to effectively flip the relationship of the garage and the bedroom on that half of the unit. So it won't be substantially different, but it will be technically different.
No change to living space though?
No change to living space. All they will have to study is how you connect into the bedroom, how does that work? So it'll be, again, slightly different, but I don't think it would be drastically different.
So what are we gonna be seeing from Old Oak and Bucket?
So from Old Oak and Bucket, you would be seeing this top-left image is the front elevation when the garages are on the front. It would be very similar to this, although I'd like, we're gonna have some variation when we ultimately do this. I hate to do literally the same elevation for every single instance. I think we would try to create some variety with color and changes that details, et cetera. But by and large, it would be this, just without these garage doors. Instead, you'd have a couple of windows for the bedroom. And that's what you would see for, I'll go back to the site plan. Certainly this unit, you're seeing its front elevation with its front porch. I guess technically for what's number unit, number two and number five, you're technically seeing the side elevation, which is shown here in the upper right-hand.
And then, and sorry, if you could just leave the interior layout up for just a a moment there. First floor bedroom and then anywhere from two to three bedrooms upstairs, correct?
Just the two bedrooms upstairs, an optional bonus room, I think.
Optional bonus room, not bedroom, okay.
Not bedroom, yeah, it won't have a closet, it won't have any of those sorts of things. It's really meant to be like a home office since that's become a really important consideration for a lot of folks these days.
Certainly. And we're, we're looking at just under 2,000 square feet?
Uh, including the.
Just over?
Just over, including the bedroom.
There we go. Very helpful.
Thank you. Question, just one other, basements?
Slabs.
Or slabs, slabs?
We covered that on.
I can't remember.
No, we're doing this, sorry, basements, that's what we covered. And then we.
I think Mark highlighted the basement waterproofing that we're gonna be doing. It's a dry system, it's not allowed, it's designed to not let water in, so you don't have to pump it out.
Yeah, so any concern about the house is just floating away?
No.
Okay. You're gonna, you're gonna weigh him down, right? Ballast. Yeah.
Mark, did you include it?
No, I did not.
But I have.
I can, I can send it PDFs on it. It's, it's called the, the name of this process, this system is called TUFN Dry, T U F F dash N dash Dry. It's a waterproofing system. There's three or four systems out there that qualify to completely waterproof the basement. The dipple plastic.
Dipple plastic? It is. Combination of a couple of different treatments. I will email Janina, the E S person in the morning, and she can forward it to you post. To the Yandere.
So slightly more complex than that guy with the Flexi Seal spray.
I tried the amount of power, it was not available.
Okay, that's probably for the best.
It's a, it's a local company that's doing it. They're, they're in Situate.
Yes, tell me that.
Great, so. All right, very helpful.
I, I, yeah, I thought that. Appreciate it.
Maybe can we go over the, Jeremy, maybe that last slide with the, with some of the exterior details and the materials that we're gonna be using?
Yeah, absolutely. So again, we've included this in some of our previous packages as well. I won't run through every one of these bullets, but these are the sorts of things that you would expect for this sort of style of, you know, traditional architecture. I will point out, we are not intending to use vinyl siding. We'll use some sort of composites, you know, a fiber cement sort of material, something along those lines. Yeah, we're using durable materials that look good and, you know, stand the test of time with minimal maintenance for the, for the homeowners.
You know, I, I probably bears saying, we spent a lot of time in these hearings talking about the things we don't love and the things we want you to change. I, I, I'm sure it's going to be to your benefit come sale time. I see we have a broker in the room. But putting the density of the site aside, obviously that's, that's where 40B comes into play. It looks like we put together a very nice product. Obviously, the town, because it counts for extra credit, wants rental units. These aren't okay. But at the end of the day, we have effectively 24 modestly sized, what look like free, any single-family homes, which in my opinion are rather in keeping with the neighborhood and the town. And so kudos for that.
The, obviously the affordable units have to be the same from the outside. So there's gonna be no difference, no difference in quality, no difference in appearance. It'll all be well-built.
Wonderful. With, I guess, one question on the layout of the revisions. The fire department had blessed the plan as it stood at the last hearing. I would be surprised if they had any objections or concerns with the two minor changes, but.
They said it all.
They, they have.
The current plan, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I must have.
I don't think we saw that, if you could just send that to Janita. Um, there was a, we'll get to it in Merrill's notes. But the plan that they looked at obviously had the hydrant locations on it, correct?
It was, it was, yeah, it was Mark's architectural plan, as well.
Right. So fantastic. All right, unless anyone has another plan. I, I have no intention on reading the whole of this. Abstracting is unfortunately something I have a lot of practice at. I have gone through this, I'm going to fully ignore Merrill's previous comments where they've noted them as addressed. And then we'll spend a little bit of time or potentially not that much time on some of the stuff that they've noticed that they've noted as other than addressed. And which is not to say that we need to come to a resolution on that issue. I would just like the board and the members of the public and the abutters that are here to understand, at least at the most basic level, that issue. And then we can hear from both sides as to where you're optimistic that you're gonna come to some sort of compromise or resolution or new understanding on those. I went ahead and added page numbers to the Merrill report, no additional charge for my services there. On page two, we would begin with a question about a one-foot-wide berm road on the plan and whether that is adequate from a pedestrian standpoint. Could, could you point us to exactly where on the plan you're referring to on that?
Speaking to me, Deb?
Yes.
Yes. So that would be between the Cape Cod berm, the curbing on the roadway, and then there's a one-foot space. And then you have the proposed sidewalk. So I would assume that, that, that one-foot space is gonna either be gravelled or grassed. I'm just asking, because we're using Cape Cod berm, it's a mountable curb, which mean people can drive right over it. So I was looking for a little bit of vertical separation, which you can get either from doing a vertical curb since your sidewalk is close to the roadway. Typically, either we have a vertical curb, you can have the sidewalk right butt up against a vertical curb, or you give a four or five-foot separation between the sidewalk and the back of curb. And then it helps for two things, it gives you a little bit more separation between the pedestrian access and the vehicle access. And it also gives you a wider strip that could be, uh, support better landscaping. A one-foot strip, I, I would recommend it's probably not gonna grow too much, but weeds maybe? Unless it's gonna become crushed stone. So I just wanted a little more detail as to how that was gonna interact in the, in the design.
Thank you. That's very helpful. That explanation is what I'm looking to get out of this because that detail, quite honestly, wasn't included in your report. And I don't necessarily want to assume that they understand exactly the concern you're raising. I'm positive that all of us didn't fully understand the concern you're raising. Hearing you elaborate on it, it makes perfect sense. And that's gone due, for me, all right, one foot, why, why do I care to? No, I definitely care, you're making perfect sense. So that's helpful and I'm glad we're doing this exercise.
Why don't we require granite curbs on 12 and et cetera?
Do you know? It's basically the planning board that, you know, works on conditions for subdivisions, but I think the answer maybe yes.
So I, I. I think it's a little safety issue from time to time with fire department because not necessarily fire trucks, but potentially police vehicles and ambulances might have their tires shredded if they attempt to get up on top of the curb. Whereas a Cape Cod berm will allow you to kind of halfway or get a car up there. And I think that that is the reason. It's, it's a subdivision rules and regulations, regulations. And what happens often is you get into the planning board process and everybody talks about how they want granite curbs. And so what usually occurs is even though the planning board regulations require Cape Cod berms, there will be waivers granted that require granite.
I will believe you, but I'm pretty sure.
Could you slow granite under that theory though, couldn't you?
I'm sorry, I agree.
I, I think a short answer from my perspective is we just did a 36-unit 40B in Duxbury and typically the strip between the edge of the Cape Cod berm and the sidewalk, and that was two feet. And we'd be happy to talk to Deb about expanding the amount of space we've got between the berm and the sidewalk, but it's not gonna be 40.
I, I don't even know if you have space for two feet because something we're gonna talk about in a few minutes is driveway length. And we're, we're playing with a pie. If somebody gets a bigger piece, somebody gets a smaller piece, right? Quick question for you, Bob, off the top of your head, which I, you were not required to know. What are the curves at Stockbridge?
I'm sorry.
That's quite all right. You have plenty of other details saved up in the old oak and I did not. Sorry.
One of the hills, two inches, right? Old Oak and Bucket, those are all.
All right, that's.
It's all.
We have one here. If, if Stockbridge is granted too, and honestly, I'll be surprised if we get a significant amount more space in between the sidewalk and the roadway then, and honestly, given what I've seen, our emergency vehicle scandal here and the occasional storms that we have, I'm not so worried about their tires. I think that the board might end up leaning towards the additional pedestrian protection there. If Stockbridge is Cape Cod and that seems to be working, this essentially looks like Stockbridge's tunnel twin. So if it worked there, I think this board would be hard-pressed to say it doesn't work here. But those are our thoughts. I think we have a clear understanding now on what we were talking about there. I, I am more than open to the engineers doing a little bit of their own research and coming to a consensus on that one in their follow-up meetings.
Anthony, the other comment that's typically heard about Cape Cod berm is that it's cut up and by plows.
Yeah.
It's pretty easy to gouge it out.
Yes.
You know, you've heard of plow operation and it just, yeah, that's just the way it is.
Yeah. And quickly to go over the one-foot strip, as someone that has a great deal of experience in failing to grow grass, a one-foot strip takes expertise beyond any of the incredibly expensive landscapers that I've hired over my time here in Situate. So that probably is something to consider, whether it's gravel, whether it's the driveway going all the way to a curb, something to consider.
So I think what I'm hearing is if it comes down to a one-foot strip or granite curbing, you'll take the granite.
I think that's right. And a, and a wider sidewalk. But again, if, if you all think you have a better plan, I doubt we're gonna disagree.
Forty-eight? Eighty-four?
So it's already pretty.
Forty, forty-eight inches is, I think is the 88 required.
Yeah.
Whatever.
The minimum.
The minimum.
Minimum.
Yeah. I think if the roadway is 200 feet in length, then it requires kind of a little area where people can pull over or whatever. Or it would increase from 48 to five feet. So we'll talk about it.
Sounds good.
So if, if I could add one, just one quickly, and we're just talking about the curbing. So if if I could add one, just one quickly, and we're just talking about the curbing where you've got sidewalk. So there's an opportunity, and I I think you've probably all seen it, where you only have vertical granite curb on one side where the sidewalk is and the other side of the road can still be maintained as Cape Cod berm. So that kind of, maybe that kind of is a meet in the middle version where you still have some flexibility for your safety vehicles, but still maintaining pedestrian safety as well.
Good point. The next thing that popped up on that second page was a request for an updated landscaping plan, it looks like we do have that. So we'll move on from there.
Okay.
Um, also on that page two was a mention of retaining walls and some question as to their height and exact location. I think, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, retaining walls under four feet do not require a building permit.
That's correct, or engineering.
And in my opinion, if they don't require a building permit, they don't require being discussed at this hearing, cause we have plenty of other stuff on our list. Where are there retaining walls that either will or may exceed four feet on this plan?
If you look at sheet four.
Close to the screen here, excuse me. And my uh, my engineer who works for me, Tony Esposito, is with us by Zoom.
You know, I'm I'm sorry, I'm sorry to cut you off, I'm just doing some time calculations in my mind and whatnot. Does it make sense, and tell me if you think we should discuss it here? For you to make sure that Merrill's aware of where the retaining walls over four feet exist?
Absolutely.
You can convince them that they are adequately engineered and from a safety standpoint of folks existing on a property. I'd be surprised if we asked you all to show your work and you both agree. So maybe we can put that on the list for your meeting subsequent to this.
Certainly would.
All right.
Just one thing that I would add uh to that, if I might. Um, is the clarification, if you look at uh in particular units twenty and nineteen. They're right at the bend at the end uh near the end of the development. The retaining wall is directly behind the building, so what I was looking for was some clarification of how that that those two structures would be connected or not connected, do we have a wall? You know, someone walking, you know, can open up a window and now they're gonna fall not to grade around the building?
Yeah, right.
Do you want me to answer that now? Certainly, the the building is obviously very, very close to the retaining wall. Uh, the reason retaining wall is there is so we can respect the twenty five foot buffer uh to Morgan vegetated wetlands and it is certainly not ideal. And I think the free market is going to uh work in this situation where somebody is uh going to say, well, I'm not gonna pay as much money for that house as I will for that house.
Right.
So it's not a, but again, I think the marketplace is gonna be solid, I don't believe there's any issues other than that.
You raise my interesting point about the marketplace, which brings me back to a question. That I I think we've done it on them, where are the affordable units on this?
They're they're listed.
They are.
They are, it's an A on the ones that are four.
An A?
Yeah.
Alright, so, alright.
Jeremy, you have, Jeremy, you have the calculation at hand?
The number of affordable units?
No, the location, which units are affordable, do you have that?
I I put stars on units, but I'm concerned that they might not match those plans wherever there are As. So I'd hate to try to pull mine up and then realize some.
I have, I have one up front, it's the one that moved slightly off Old Oak and Bucket. I have the third and fourth back from Old Oak and Bucket on the southern side of Road A. I have um one sort of up front along the back of the Hammerhead at Road B, it's number thirteen. And then we have number twenty, which is the rear right corner of the deck is right on the retaining wall. But not the whole rear of the home like nineteen that we were just talking about.
Sheet, sheet one, she has all the uh.
Yes, sorry, I was like sheet one. Um.
They're they're.
Sorry. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I have seven affordable units marked here.
Alright.
Yeah.
Well, we're very distributed throughout, we didn't, we didn't um close them in one area. Every house is the same amount of bedrooms um. And they're not, like I said, all picked in the back, all picked in the front.
So I got, I got seven with circled As, it looks like on unit seven, there's a very small circled A in the garage.
Yep.
If we had seven, we mistakenly.
Yeah, that, there must be a smaller circled A that meant something else. If you, if you look at page one of the plan, on unit twelve, there's a small circled A, and on unit seven, there's a small circled A. I'm guessing that those are smaller in font size and not centrally located in the living area, I'm guessing that those are not affordable indications.
Right.
Which leaves us with the sits remaining, which are rather well dispersed throughout the demo.
I believe the small A that you're referring to is referring to the style of the, the architectural.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so that would be units three, eight, thirteen, sixteen, twenty, and twenty two.
Yep, great.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah, um, can I, a quick question on the the foundation issue. Mark, on the two units that are close to those walls, did we have an exposed foundation already conceived of? Or are you still trying to hold, in other words, could we make the basement wall the retaining wall for those couple of units and avoid having to build an additional retaining wall?
I, I will be happy to think about that, but the uh answer off the top of my head would be no, I prefer to have the uh wall.
Okay.
I think the grade drops farther than where the foundation ends, Jeremy, so they need to continue, they would have to extend the foundation farther or um construct the retaining wall.
Gotcha.
Then, uh, just while we're on grade foundations and retaining walls in the waiver list, and I and I don't mean to jump ahead. I think there was a little confusion on one of your waivers where there's there's section of our code that talks about grading not occurring in which it creates a slope of greater than twenty five percent. I think there may have been a misinterpretation of that twenty five percent. It's not an amount of grading, it's it's a as to slope. So I think it would be helpful, at some point, we will want to see where on the site. To the extent there is any grading on the site of a slope greater than twenty five percent, we'll want to see where as part of our analysis of that.
Greater than twenty five or twenty?
I believe that the code section requires it to be twenty five percent or less. It is, the section is noted in your waiver, I think it may have just been slightly misinterpreted. Um, in effort to keep it moving, also on page two, there is a mention of roof drain leader systems. Quickly, could one of you describe? I think we're sticking with most people on roof drain, what's what's the leader you're speaking of?
So it would be the the roof downspouts come down from the gutters. So then there, then there's the roof leader that collects the gutter, um, the downspouts. And directs it to the either dry well, or in this case, the subsurface chamber system that's going to collect the roof runoff. What I was looking for here is just since the units are basically uh very similar, the roof lines are very similar, is just one typical footprint showing how they were going to collect all of those downspouts. And get them to the one leader that they're showing from the house to the uh subdrain. I, we don't need to add them to every unit, just one, that's why I was saying one typical layout, so that we can know that all of those roof leaders can get to that system that they're intending them for.
We, we can, we can draw up the detail and add that to the plans, sure.
Great, thank you.
Fantastic. We're on to page three, where um there's, it sounds like you're looking for similar detail as to fill.
Um, yeah, it just looked like the uh excavation quantity plan that was provided. Um, mainly just, there must have been some tweaking with the grading and it just didn't get um followed through with the excavation and quantity plan. So there might be some updates there that need to happen, for example, they were um calculating it in quadrants on the site and some of the sites eliminated some of the grading that was proposed, but that volume number still accounted for. Um, fill in that quadrant, so it looks like it might just need to be updated. And then I didn't, I didn't know if the board wanted to have a little bit of um discussion, and maybe this is for a later date, but looking at the amount of fill that potentially would need to come into the site, uh, some traffic management for uh construction vehicles. Roots and that kind of such, I'm sure that's something that could be discussed farther down the line.
Well, there's no time like the present. Um, in terms of roots, they're sort of coming in from the north or you're coming in from the south.
Yep.
Um. I think that the town does a relatively decent job of regulating and laying out construction schedules. I what else would there be to discuss? If if your fill's coming in from south of situate, you're gonna come up through the rotary. And if your fill's coming in from north of situate, you're gonna come over the aforementioned Maple Street intersection. Um, if you're coming from the south, we're not gonna make you come around the top and the north vice versa, and both of those approaches have their own concerns regarding traffic and whatnot, so I I think that, yeah.
I can make a suggestion, and we just went through this with uh uh our project in Duxbury and uh was our traffic engineer as well, and what we had them do, similar question, I asked, what we had them do was come up with a plan, okay, detailing routes, et cetera, uh times. Typically, what you're gonna see is anywhere from the start time from uh traditionally, usually seven o'clock on a weekday, seven AM. Uh quitting time, uh six PM, on a weekday, and uh on a Saturday, usually eight AM to five PM. No work on Sunday, uh no work on holidays. Uh, but that would all be laid out in the construction management traffic plan.
Right, yeah, I mean, you just need to be cognizant of that, that those are fundamentally uh commuting choke points, right? And those, you know, a seven AM start is still a commuting time, school buses, right, you just sure, right, cause those are school bus routes.
And and that's why I suggest we have our traffic engineers do this.
I think, I I think, I think uh maybe even a better way of doing it, and I would be uh should the board actually approve this, perhaps a condition that requires prior to construction, a meeting with Bob. Uh, at which meeting deciding to be reviewed and agreed upon.
And that's how, as I've tried it similarly before, I think, yeah, like some of the benefit here is is the depth of this site.
Yep.
And the way it's laid out is that while the road isn't necessarily great for large deliveries of large trucks. If, I can't imagine they're gonna spend a large amount of time blocking over the bucket. They're gonna be able to pull into the site and go and do a lot of the damage there. Right, and you know, again, you, it can be scheduled in a way that it doesn't interfere with the commuting patterns of the large deliveries. But in a day, right, load up the stuff, it's it's pretty automatically doable. Also, good guess, please.
Mention just on that subject that we have uh difficulties, if you will, with Perrin Book matter on on this issue.
Sure.
In terms of traffic noise, deliveries, et cetera. This site's off the beaten path a little bit, but most of the route that you'll need to get to this site is the same route that get to Perrin Perrin Book. So it definitely deserves some discussion and careful, careful consideration.
I think more of that with Perrin Book has been the trucks pulling over just prior to or at the point of entry, is that right?
Yeah, that's part of it, timing is part of it as well.
Yeah.
You know, um, seven o'clock really means no disturbance of the site or areas adjacent to the site prior to seven o'clock.
Yeah, it doesn't mean trucks show up in six o'clock.
No, you know, early deliveries and then I'm gonna wait till seven before I enter the site, that sort of thing.
Yeah, no, that's absolutely right. I think it it makes sense, we'll get into the traffic and construction plan, and that's regularly handled once we know what goes there.
Yeah, and and where the materials are coming from.
Right, we are, um. Your next comment on that page, page three is is mentioned stop signs are proposed at intersections. Like, where are stop signs proposed at the site?
Well, uh, we have Dan from Manass Associates on the call.
Yeah.
And I think Dan might be able to address that quickly, if you're on, Dan.
Hi, Dan.
You're mute.
Someone may need to let him be unmuted, I know that was a challenge for me too.
There we go.
Okay. I I can start off quickly, it, the the two stop signs that I found, um, why it was noted was was obviously at the entrance. And then at the T um at the end, so those are the two locations where stop signs are are proposed. And shown.
Yeah.
It says it, it's super small.
Stop sign, we're road A, we're road B, and proposed stop sign at the end.
Okay. Great, so I guess, um, so it says addressed, sorry, I, we don't necessarily need to be talking about that, it sounds like.
Yep.
You're, you're set there. Uh, Dan, we're gonna get back to you, though, don't go away.
Uh, Dan, if if you could make sure to unmute Dan.
Okay, then we have a partially addressed on the curbing, which we really discussed. Um, and then also number three, it it sounds like again, Merrill's just looking for some more information on utility connections. I believe the information is here on the plan. It should just be getting everyone together on that, and you all be able to do that when you come back to us. My expectation will be, yeah, we're good on utility connections, or we think they should move it here, and they said they don't want to because. If you all move the utility connections, and you both agree, as far as I'm concerned, great. If you move the hydrants, bounce them back off fire, so you can tell us that fire blessed it. Moving to page four, we start again with emergency vehicles, again, fires who we were concerned about. Um, we're, we're already on top of that. And then on four, we get into leaching fields. I, I'm not sure we need to get into the techniques of the leaching fields tonight. What I want to know is after the two sides have discussed the engineering specifics of the leaching fields. To the extent you are apart on any of the details for the proposal. I'd like to know from Merrill what you think could be better, and then I'd like to know from your side why you think it's not better, or why you think it's not feasible. All right, uh, five, the fifth page here. Yeah, we're deferring the Board of Health, this is sort of our first mention of that, it becomes a little referring. Let's not refer to the Board of Health. Let's not refer to the Board of Health, uh, un- unfortunately, the Board of Health has the opportunity to provide input. Traditionally doesn't in this scenario, and unfortunately, we have all the decision-making power of the Board of Health. We're going to go ahead and rely on Meryl to tell us what they think we should decide. So, let's please not refer to the Board of Health, or really, anyone else within town. We'd like to know what you, Meryl, would do if you were the Board of Health.
So my question to the board would be, are you going to require the project to obtain a Title V septic design permit? Which would be through the Board of Health.
Yeah, there we go, yeah, why, what are we, so again, just to go back on. Forty B overall, and maybe a good refresher for everyone, since we refreshed on the project, the town has their council here. Kevin, please correct me if I slip up. The purpose of this hearing is for this board, for better or worse, no offense to my esteemed colleagues. To decide whether or not the plan the applicant is putting in front of us. Is acceptable in light of all town bylaws, requirements and regulations. Any ordinances, regulations, statutes and the like put forth by the state or the federal government. We don't get a vote on, the applicant still has to deal with that separately from our review here. Title V, state regulation.
So I think that's.
There you go, you, please.
Yeah, no, I was, I was just, um, my, my point was, I, I was assuming they would be filing with the Board of Health for their Title V. Septic permit. And.
I understand.
I didn't wanna speak for the board to say, yes, you know, you have enough, you know, the system is fine. And then have them go before the board, or say, oh, Meryl reviewed it already, I have not reviewed it. In, in the sense of looking at it for uh, the Board of Health.
So more of a disclaimer that you haven't reviewed as to Title V, which makes perfect sense.
Really, the statement is effectively, the Board of Health would determine the adequacy of the soil testing pursuant to.
Yes.
Yes.
If I may, in my experience, I think we might forget eight or nine, forty B project, and I've done. Uh, usually, uh, we come up with a fairly detailed conceptual design.
Yes.
Which is basically what we have here. Uh, should this board grant us a comprehensive permit, obviously that's going to be a condition. Of the comprehensive permit that we receive, get uh, uh, approvals from the local Board of Health. Uh, approvals from the Conservation Commission with management regarding state jurisdiction, Title V and the weapons protection.
Yes, and then, again, for everyone, turn me Friday, please tell me if I've been doing it wrong up to this point. To the extent that hearing. Requires a change to something other than the technical specifics. Of the plan of the field and system that appears on our plan. You would come back to this board for determination as to whether or not that was a substantial change. If the board reviewed without necessarily calling a hearing to say that it was not a substantial change. You'd receive that in writing, and you would go forth and prosper, if it wasn't substantial change. We'd have a hearing as to that change specifically. All right.
Agreed, agreed.
Uh, you, you. Maybe could uh. Consider having Bob or the, having the building inspector be the first kind of line of defense as to whether something. He, he or she thinks something is uh, substantial or not, so that way, you know what I mean?
Yes.
It might, it might just be a little procedurally, might make things a little smoother, that's all.
Yeah, makes a lot of sense, it, it really, it's what we've done in the past, we've, for instance, there have been a, a number of. Not substantial changes on Herringbrook Meadow, um, just large project, large building, required some tweaks. And for everyone's benefit, the, the system that we've sort of adapted into there. Is Bob receives the change, provides typically very conclusive comments. On the change, and I think there was one area where he felt that the change. Went to some of what we reviewed in connection with a waiver that we granted in that project. And that warranted some significant additional discussion from the board, and we had a quick hearing. And when it doesn't go to a waiver, Bob had said so, and the board typically all agreed, no, it's not substantial. Janine was able to put that in the file, and we were able to avoid a hearing, and that would be our plan going forward as well. Utility connections, leaching fields, the Board of Health, which, again, that additional explanation makes a lot of sense. For those you, those of you following at home, we are probably crossing the halfway through point of Meryl's. Letter, and I'm confident we're gonna be able to move even quickly, more quickly from there.
What, what page are you on?
Page six now.
I'm just moving to page six, yes.
Six, seven, alright.
Yeah, it starts with F.
Um. Septic system details, it seems like there are some conflicting details there. We have a little bit more color on that?
Um, sure, I was just looking at uh, the septic leaching field. Profile versus the section, and some of the elevations differ between the details, and so just, it's just cleanup. To make sure that everything uh, matches up, and we don't have uh, conflicting details showing the elevation of the system. Higher than it uh, should be, et cetera.
Sure, again, sounds like something perfect for you all to discuss and.
Housekeeping.
Perfect, uh, moving on to page seven, we're about halfway down the page. Again, if you could just provide some color on, there's some detail or concern regarding watershed plants.
Uh, sure, so, um, when reviewing the uh, drainage analysis, we have the watershed plans. And what I did notice, um, and I could be wrong, I was calcing the area calcs, um. Adding them up, and it looked to me like the post watershed or um, construction watershed was about twenty thousand square feet. More than what was proposed in the existing, so just, I, I think, you know, when you move watersheds around, sometimes, um. You add it one place but don't deduct it in another one, so there might be a little bit uh, of area that needs to be uh, reduced or just. Justify, if there's an increase somewhere, then the, you're adding watershed that's not shown on the plan. Um, I think, again, it's a housekeeping issue, um, I think the other thing. Uh, with the watershed lands, let me see if I can find that note. Um. I think a lot, a lot of the notes, actually, you could probably skip, um, are on the hide, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, so moving from that all the way through page. Nine and ten, it looks like we're dealing with watershed, stormwater discharge and things like that.
Correct.
What, what I'd like to see is, you all get together, understand exactly where each other is coming from with those systems. Come back to us with, Meryl, this is where we think that their changes fall short. Your, this is why they think our changes fall short, or this is why it's not feasible. And then.
Sure.
We can get down to that for next time, I, I think, honestly, it doesn't feel like your list of things. Where you need to put your heads together is that long, recognizing we haven't gotten to traffic yet, I think we're gonna double back for that. Maybe, depending on what the rest of the board thinks, after we hear from the neighbors, because it's been. The topic where honestly they've had the most input up to this point. Um.
So yeah, yes, I would.
Yeah.
Agree, it's how, how, a, a lot of, it's drainage is housekeeping, uh, it's always like you move one thing and it's a domino effect in the design. And just making sure that it gets um, corrected all the way through, so definitely housekeeping. For the most part.
Fantastic, I, I'm on to page eleven, standard eight, we're really, it seems like we're talking about. A construction plan, I think Jeff, to your point, we're absolutely going to put together a construction plan. Phases, timing, when you're coming in, when you're coming out, but. Prudence would dictate, let's confirm exactly what we're building first, and then we'll talk about how we're gonna do it. Um. Page. Twelve. We get into. Standard, uh, we're on G. Um, it looks as though you're getting into an analysis here of the applicant's requirements to comply. With the state's regulations as to forty B.
Correct. These were original comments, um, in my original letter that follow your guidance in your comprehensive permit, um. Bylaw section, um, and I just didn't have a response uh, back from any of them. They may have been addressed, as I state, uh, with the board already, I just uh, wanted to note that I had not received. Um, any further information.
Sure, I appreciate that, and thank you for the additional explanation. I'm going to discuss this section of our comprehensive permit bylaw with town council. To maybe get a better understanding of what maybe doesn't need to be in our bylaw, because it's already in several state bylaws. Or what we may need from the applicant to document our file appropriately. I'm not sure, I, actually, I am sure at this point that we don't need Meryl to do any further work on that section.
Sure.
Um. The very last page of your report looks like it's where you threw in some. Seemed to be useful comments that maybe didn't fall into one of the other boxes.
That is correct, and, and most of them are, again, housekeeping on the plans, making sure that your, your rim and inverts are correct. Uh, labeling is correct, um, and, and making sure that the drainage analysis and the plans match.
Sure, there, there were a couple in there, though, that I wanted to touch upon, wanted to say out loud and wanted then the public to have a. Chance to question or comment on, the first, ver- first bullet point, could a driveway turnaround be provided for unit? One, and that, that question makes some sense to me, if I'm pulling into unit one and then backing out of unit one. Does seem like it's a tough turnaround there, maybe for that particular. Unit, and I, I guess maybe that would apply to eighteen as well. You all see what we're saying there with that, if you're backing out of eighteen. To back out, or you're backing out of one, you, you're probably driving off the road there to make that K-turn.
Well, obviously, take a hard look at that.
Yeah, so extending, and it looks like actually on eighteen, there is a little space before the retaining wall there to extend the area there. And similarly, it, it also looks like there may be some area there beyond one.
Right.
Um.
Might look at twelve too.
Also.
Is very good.
Twelve, two, yeah.
Yeah, twelve, the other one.
Yeah, essentially, you're looking for what we did for eleven, right, look at unit eleven, right next to it, has the little kind of tail where you can stick your butt for you.
That's right, yes, we're looking for what you did with eleven.
Yep.
Yep, exactly, and I think that's a, a great point. Um, there's a note about building foundations intersecting drought, groundwater. I think we spoke about that before, we have, we have the pipe system, things like that, so we'll see some more detail on that. Um. Proposed spot grades over the large chamber systems, that sounds like it's gonna fall under. Some of the. Stormwater or septic questions that you had raised before. Rim is invert again, both drainage again, on the road A profile, please review the inverts. For DMH four, I guess we're talking about stormwater there?
Yes, so it just looks like it's probably a typo, um.
I got you.
The pipe was up about too high, so it wouldn't be draining in the right direction.
Right, a little bit of graining, dri- uh, excuse me, grating on the next uh. Bullet, pipe information, sounds like cleanup and chamber field dimensions, again, that sounds like self. You guys will come together on to be able to identify where you differ, and then we can talk about that at the next. Meeting, I think, do we have, we have both sides' traffic engineers present?
So long as Daniel can still speak.
We're gonna let Daniel.
He says no.
And there's Kristen Braun.
Alright.
Yep.
So I. What do you, what do you all, I guess, first. Other than traffic, and other than hearing from the public. Anything else we, you think we should cover next?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could I ask just a very simple point, it's one of the, it's one of the architectural requests in the memo from Meryl.
Certainly.
It was on, it was on page five, um, it was item number C, it makes, it makes reference to listing materials and interior amenities. I just kinda wanted to clarify, we're, we don't typically provide interior details for things for zoning boards and planning boards, you know, it's usually the, the bigger concern is the exterior. Because that's the character of the community and the scale of the neighborhood, and whether or not it's hardwood floors or shag carpet on the inside doesn't usually, you know. Concern the board, so I just wanted to ask whether or not that was actually something we needed to concern ourselves with.
Sure, so I, I think the only. Chain of events that I think could make the board concerned with that, please, anyone else speak up, if you have something to add. Is if we got shag carpets in six affordable units and Brazilian wormwood in. Eighteen remaining units, understanding that there are going to be upgrades available. Um, but, you know, the devil's in the details there, how that's done, the difference between base finishes and upgrades. If the delta ends up being really large on ninety-six percent. Of the non-affordable units and the affordable units, we're gonna. Be a pain in your rear for a little while, and so you show us how we got there. Um. We haven't had much of a problem with that thus far here in Situate. We've had some comments about it, and, you know, to a certain extent. No, that someone who bought a market rate unit and paid to upgrade their counters is going to have nicer counters. I've read forty B, it certainly leaves the door open for that, but. I think you all understand where that has to go, that was a very long answer, I apologize. But no, I don't think we need a list of interior materials.
Great, thank you.
Quick question, just to move on to better or better, what code will this have fallen under, does it fall under fifteen or are they gonna be? Well, energy code, the new energy code run into affect.
Did it fall under the new one?
So he's under the new one, does that affect him in any way? Are you gonna be, I know gas was a big, because we're a stretch code company, right? Gas was a big concern in the new stretch code, I have read the details of it, but is it something you guys are looking at as far as whether you're gonna be pulling gas in this thing or not? Or?
We are gonna land on putting gas in, yeah, uh, but we'll take a look at it.
And I haven't, yeah, I haven't looked at the new, but it does, it's heavy on getting a little hole.
Right, right, right.
So, I don't know if you guys have looked at that, and, you know, the insulation requirements have increased also, you know. That's getting into your values and things like that.
Only there is writing, obviously, on each one, so that's gonna be.
But a lot of that, and a lot of the increases. But a lot of that, a lot of the increases, a lot of increases are affecting the cost of building, these buildings. I just didn't know where that plays into the whole scheme of things.
Information on gas stoves. People don't like gas stoves. Consumer protection.
Hurry up and buy them.
Yeah.
One other thing, Anthony, on Stockbridge Landing for each one of the units, they're duplexes, so it's not quite apples to apples. But there is on the site plan, lines if you will, boundaries that are designated as exclusive use areas for a particular unit. And I'm thinking that at some point, whether it's at this point or later on, we're gonna need to see how that works for this development as well.
That's a great point and, and that's something that I think is an energy that we need to look at for marketing as well. So I'm gonna take a look at that.
So this is, this is gonna fall under the condominium issue?
Yeah, I'm not sure we need to address it as part of this approval process, but it's something that I wanna look at for the condo documents.
Wanna say that we've had condominium plans for Stockbridge and Herringbrook.
Oh no, you're gonna, you're gonna need those, absolutely.
And the exclusive use areas would be laid out on the condominium, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
You're gonna need condominium unit plans and you're gonna need a condominium site plan which will.
Which will lay out your exclusive use areas and common areas, which once you lay out one, you see the other, you just have to assign it to units.
Yeah, no, all, all I meant was, you know, we're going to be forced to have to deal with that issue. I don't know if it's worthy of us discussing as part of this particular hearing, but if you want us to look at that, we can.
I think we will want to see that. I can't, I'd be very surprised if what you put in front of us leads to comments or requests for tweaks. But I, I think someone would scratch their head if they saw us grant a comprehensive permit before we saw that. Got it? Anything else that the board or Bob you would like to touch on before we get to public comment and traffic?
Not really.
No? All right. Thoughts on whether we should go to the public before traffic or after? I'm leaning towards before, because I feel like we're gonna have to double back to traffic if we don't go to the public before.
Yeah, I also think we've gone through a lot.
Yep. I think that we should, I think that's good and we can go back. Public, and it doesn't look like we have any members of the public or butters here in the room, so we're all on Zoom, which is great. Some notes on behalf of myself and the board beforehand. We're going to come back to you after we hear from traffic. If you have a question or comment on something other than traffic, absolutely bring it up now. I'm going to push this board, and I don't expect I will get much pushback from my fellow members, to move quickly when the engineers come back having met. This will not be your last opportunity to speak, but I'm quite certain this will be your best opportunity to speak and be heard and actually have your comments make a difference in a potentially approved permit. So absolutely, if you have something other than traffic, please bring it up first and foremost now. If you have questions or comments about traffic, I think that also makes sense now because it will give our traffic engineers a chance to note that when they speak in a few minutes. Regarding traffic, some of my own thoughts here, and I would welcome the board to agree or disagree at this point. We're adding twenty-four units is the proposal, twenty-four single-family three-bedroom homes to this neighborhood. We're aware that there could be traffic at the rotary. We're aware that everyone doesn't pass their driver's test when going through the Old Oak and Bucket and Maple Street intersection. This development is going to add cars to both of those situations. To use a less than technical term, it's not going to add a lot of cars to those situations. My opinion is we all need to accept that. I don't feel, and the town's council is here and you can disagree with me openly, I would welcome it, or we could certainly discuss it otherwise. I don't feel the town will have any opportunity to deny this permit or limit the number of uses because of the traffic concerns here. I believe, though, we'll hear from the traffic engineers, that the sightlines that are recommended by state traffic standards are going to be met for the entrance and exit. Once that is done, our ability to lessen the number of units is extremely limited under forty B and case law and, and the way HAP works when boards try to challenge for that. If you have an idea on something that could be done to this area of Old Oak and Bucket in connection with this development that you feel will make the traffic situation noticeably better, and if something other than limiting the number of units, we would love to hear it. But we, we do try to wanna be productive with those, what I believe are facts, being kept in mind. Well, and just so the public, because not everybody's been here for the entire process understands, this was originally proposed as, was it thirty?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, right? I wanted to get the number right, thirty-two units, and now we're down to twenty-four. That's right. So just so people, people understand that it has been a substantial change.
They were approved with thirty-four.
And they were approved by the state. That, that's why I'm trying to get the numbers straight. They were approved, they were approved on the forty B for thirty-four. They came to us for thirty-two and we're now at twenty-four, just some people. Speed coming up Old Oak and Bucket Road is a problem. It, it won't be for folks entering and exiting here. I welcome the traffic engineers to speak on this, but you, you're not gonna be speeding at the intersection if you're coming into here and you need to have a pretty fast part of B speeding once you've come through the intersection. Before, it's, it's just more people and to a certain extent, that part is what it is. But let's get into it. If you can raise your real or virtual hand and we will get you unmuted and then just your name and address for the record, please. Nope, you don't need name and address? There's nobody raising their hands? We don't have anyone raising their hands.
Okay.
Few argue?
I was, I was just gonna say, just so you know, there are the participants that aren't part of the town or the team. There are seven others of, one of whom is Tony Esposito, who's Mark Casey's colleague. Surely I have six members of the public listening from this agency.
We have six members of the public. All right. And one's our planning board liaison. All right, so the members of the public that are here, we're gonna go to the traffic engineers. If you change your mind or have something else to ask about or comment on, just turn on your video and interrupt and then we'll, we'll get to it. And that, that'll be our plan until it doesn't work out and then we'll change our plan. Kristen first?
You know, I, I was gonna suggest maybe Dan, only because I think Dan might be offering some kind of vacation that may answer some questions before we have to talk about them.
Well, now I'm gonna hold Dan to that. Dan, what do you got for us? You gotta wrap it up your hat. Jeff, Jeff got you to cut in line.
That's right. So just for the record, my name is Daniel Silver. I'm a traffic engineer with Financing Associates, the traffic consultants on the project. There's not a ton to speak about on traffic since we last talked. We've been thankful enough to receive the second round of peer review from Mueller. And in general, most of the unresolved comments relate to the site plans, whether it be pavement markings or truck turns into the site. There's not a ton of technical things on the traffic end. There was one thing regarding a site distance plan, which we are just waiting for ground survey on Old Oak and Bucket to be able to pull that together and show the triangles where vegetation needs to be trimmed and where the embankment needs to be removed to get those clear lines of sight. We are proposing and the applicant is amenable to putting radar speed signs on Old Oak and Bucket specifically. And I don't know if I can share my screen here. I'm just gonna bring up Google Maps. But the best places we were kind of looking at would be, one moment. Share screen, is it gonna work? Can everybody see that okay?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right. So what we were kind of thinking was the Maple Street, Winter Street intersection is under hallway stop control. So it's a kind of controlled speeds approaching the driveway and approaching the rotary. We would put one, a radar feedback sign directly to the east of Winter Street, Maple Street. So you're coming through the intersection, hopefully stopping. And then as you're beginning to speed up, you're kind of hit with this sign saying, hey, here's the speed limit, here's how fast you're going. And then on the other end, coming westbound on Old Oak and Bucket, and once you pass the Cranberry Bog and you kind of come into the more densely packed residential area, we were thinking of putting one on the north side of Old Oak and Bucket going towards the project site driveway in an attempt to slow people down before they hit that more densely packed residential. But besides that, I think that traffic barring any board or public comment is relatively resolved. But as always, I'm happy to answer any questions the board, public, or Kirsten may have.
So just to pause for a second there on this speed signs.
Yep.
Those are obviously offset. Those, I imagine, would fall within the towns right away. So you technically could accomplish that without the approval of the abutting property owner.
One hundred percent.
Even though it stands to reason that they might not love it, even if they couldn't technically stop it. Your rights and, and get out of compliance free cards for forty B don't extend to that. So I imagine that DPW within town, we'd be, we'd be placing the signs on, on land that's under their purview, for lack of a better term.
Over here in conversation within town regarding this, they are, they are doing it anyways. So get with them to get it done.
So can we put on your list to obtain DPW's thoughts on that?
On the location.
I would love it if you could also copy the police department. I'm not sure the level on which they liaise with each other. Yeah, traffic rules is a separate board in town?
Traffic rules is a department.
Really?
Traffic rules has the, has the, the safety police officer.
Yep.
On its board.
Fantastic. I would, could you forward us the exact location? Ideally, I, I wanna know what APN you wanna put the signs in front of or what APN DPW and you wanna put the signs in front of? Janine, I think I'd like to put on you a notice to the abutter that that's planned and to give, mainly to give them the opportunity to speak now or forever hold their peace at the next meeting or send in a letter. Neighbors that are there, we would encourage you to speak up as to whether or not you think that is a good or bad idea.
And get, again, give folks some clarity on what these, what form they would take, right? They took a bunch of different forms. Right, so there's the big mobile ones that tend to be extra on site leave that place and there's a bunch of more.
Yeah, I think there's.
So just, you know, let people know.
Probably the most people are familiar with the one that's in front of the Congregational Church across from the senior center. So maybe comparing it to that, whether it's gonna be more or less substantial. Might get it back.
Right.
Um, that's a pretty modest and well put together permanent one.
Uh, another thought, Mike, can you take a look at the sign that's at the corner of Curtis and Branch Street and Upright Way? Down by the Egypt Garage? That was installed as a condition of the Blanchard Farm subdivision. It's solar powered, lights up, tells you how fast you're going. It's a little bit more, I think, kind of a grabber than just a stationary sign that with a, with writing on it.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're proposing.
Right.
Solar operated.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, and that's what's across with the.
Excellent.
Yeah, yeah. It, it, it puts on more of a light show depending on how much.
But again, the size and the form factor, the neighbors, the butters might care, right? And how much they care, their, you know, their comment.
To my, my recollection, this subject about these particular devices, they actually brought up by the but. Early on in this process.
Yeah.
Yeah, they wanted one, yes. That's correct.
But I also noticed that some other abutters didn't necessarily jump on to agree because I think some of them might have seen this many moves ahead. Just for me, I, I don't like people speeding past my house. I have two young boys. I wouldn't wanna look at that out my front window. So it's a, it's a double edged sword. We want, yeah, you know, we can't always make everyone happy. We do want to hear from people who, who wanna attract. Thank you, Dan. Was that it? I think that was it for now?
That was all from mine for now, yep. Thank you very much.
Yep. Is it Kirsten? I apologize. It's Kirsten?
It's Kirsten, but I'm, I mostly get Kristen, so you're. Yeah.
Well, my, my eyes aren't as good as they once were. You almost got Kristen, so what?
That's what I usually get, ninety percent of the time. But I think Dan pretty much covered everything in terms of our outstanding comments. Their responses really did cover just about everything in the traffic study that we had posed questions to. As you mentioned, there were a couple of things we'd like to see on the site plans, specifically sightlines at the driveway. That's a huge one. We've been out in the field, that embankment really does limit sightlines. So we wanna have a plan with the sightlines on it as well as a sightline profile to make sure that that embankment won't, won't hinder any sightlines for vehicles exiting the site. So that's just a really important, outstanding comment that we have, that we, we'd really like to see just to be comfortable with, you know, access at that. you know, access at that site driveway and vehicles getting out of there. They did make a bunch of suggestions for the intersection of Maple and Winter at Old Oak and I know that was a big topic of discussion at our last hearing was safety. We do agree that all the improvements they're suggesting really will help improve safety out there, including making, improving sightlines for the approaches to the intersection as well as making those stop signs a little more visible with reflective red tape and then also relocating some of the stop signs to be a little bit closer to the intersection so people can keep watch for oncoming traffic. I know we also did talk about Old Oak and Bucket at Route 123. There was a lot of discussion about RSAs there. We did find out after discussions with Vanessa that that intersection was actually included as part of the situat rotary RSA. To my understanding, the RSA is still in draft form for some reason. I think it was completed last year, but there was a number of a number of improvements listed that would impact specifically that intersection. Given the traffic impacts here, they're rather minimal compared to some other developments. We did suggest that the applicant look through those, the low cost improvements that could, that could, you know, improve safety at that intersection. So we do suggest that the town consider requiring the applicant to further investigate some of those improvements or some of the suggestions that were made within the RSA. But other than that, as Dan said, our second review letter was pretty clean in terms of traffic comments. There isn't really anything largely outstanding aside from the sightline profile plan that we'd really like to see. But I'm happy to answer any other questions that are traffic related that the board might have.
Thank you. Just on the sightlines, so I am seeing sightlines for the entrance to the development, both both to the east and west on the plan. It's on page one here. And I have sight distances from both, from the center of that entranceway.
So, so one question we had, so we did notice that, I think it's, you're talking about on the cover page. That sightline does sort of exit the roadway slightly, so generally we like to see what dimensions were exactly used. Typically, you're supposed to take the sightline fourteen and a half feet back from the shoulder line. So I mean, it's sort of hard to tell on this plan. It looks like it was taken from a point backwards, but then again, it it is a little bit of a busy plan, so just to confirm that the distances and measurements they used are correct. And then the sightline profile would really sort of show vertically that the sightline, there's no, there's no changes in grade from the embankment that would hinder the sightline, so it's a vertical view to ensure that, that there won't be any issues for vehicles exiting the site.
Put that on the the kumbaya list for your meeting.
That dimension chase referring to is fourteen and a half feet.
Okay.
And three hundred and fifty feet to the center of the road.
Okay. Regarding your comment there about the intersection with 123. My feelings on that are at twenty-four units and given the distance of that intersection from this development, I honestly feel that it would be inappropriate to ask this applicant to do further traffic research into that intersection. I think we, I think we all agree that the impacts of this development on that intersection don't move the needle on the issues that intersection is facing.
No, I mean, that intersection became a rotary relatively recently. The impact and the development in that area that more directly impacts that rotary, you know, over the last, I don't know, ten years, right? Is what impacts the rotary. I mean, it's not going to be these twenty-four units. It's going to be the, you know, the buildup in Green Bush area, complimentary.
And we got state routes, we got, there's a lot of cooks in that kitchen. I'm not sure that there's any realistic benefit to putting another cook in that kitchen that has almost no jurisdiction whatsoever. I, I do feel it's appropriate to put some of the legwork in liaison with DPW and SPD on the speed limit signs. And to the extent if, if situat or DPW says, you know, we're honestly more interested in new higher end stop signs and restriping the stop lines at that intersection, then to put some of that research and legwork on you. And if they are saying, oh yeah, that's in our 2023 budget already, and great, maybe we're taken care of. They're saying, oh, we'd love to do that, but it's not in the cards yet, then maybe we're talking about, maybe it should be in the cards and we figure it out. For me, the rotary, I don't necessarily put that in your court. Bob, anything else?
No.
So I'd like to talk about what I want the next steps to be. I, I'm not sure when the next meeting should be. I'm sure we're going to continue this one. I would like the engineers to discuss what they feel the outstanding items are, which are form order, septic, there's some sightlines and some retaining walls. And then some other things that don't necessarily want individual mention. Once you have that conversation, I don't expect you to agree on every single thing on the suggested changes that you don't agree on. Merrill, I would like to hear from you why you think that they should have come further towards ideal. And from you, I'd like to hear why you, in my opinion, you have two options there. They're wrong because that wouldn't be better for the town, or alright, they might have a point, but that's not feasible. A standard we're all familiar with for the public. Feasibility, economic feasibility, I think is the term that Hap uses, is the standard for where a board gets to modify or limit a 40B development. If we felt that, oh, this would be a lot better for the town if it was fifteen units, they would very likely be able to meet the standard saying it's not economically feasible for us to build this project at fifteen units. It's not going to make it work and therefore the town's not going to get the twenty-five percent of fifteen affordable units and you'd be able to overturn our denial. So anyway, you understand where I'm going. We'd like to know where you differ. If you're going to stick with that difference, we'd like to know why it's not feasible. It doesn't seem to me like there's a ton of work to get there. The other thing we need is a more polished waiver list. I think it can be shorter because I think there were a couple of spots where we had like two pages of waivers where it was really one waiver. I think we can be a little bit more general in that where our code requires approval by the planning board, you can just list those codes and say, we can all acknowledge the ZBA is stepping the shoes of the planning board and we either need it's silly to ask for a waiver. If the code says the planning board has to approve that plan, the ZBA has to approve that plan. We don't have to call it a waiver. It's our approval. If we don't approve the plan, then we're not going to give you a waiver, so it's sort of six of one.
We can just say a waiver from all of the ranks, plan bar ranks.
Yeah, I love oversimplifying. I think that might be a bridge to four even for me.
I understand what you're saying.
Really, what I want to achieve is I want to differentiate where the code says you can't grade a slope over twenty-five percent and you're grading it at twenty-six percent. I want our comprehensive permit to say, we acknowledge that we are waiving this requirement. We're allowing twenty-six percent grade where twenty-five is required.
Because?
Yeah, that gets complicated and command for a very long comprehensive permit. If the code requires planning board has to approve the way your driveway is laid out, we're going to approve the way your traffic is laid out. If we have a thumbs up from Merrill on drainage and septic, putting aside the need to comply with Title V and things like that, and we've sorted out what DPW and SPD wants to do on traffic, and we have a better looking list of waivers, we're talking about a vote. I personally will consider not getting to at least the discussion on a vote at the next meeting a fair. I think it's time. I don't.
Yeah, and I think where this is, I don't know if I'll go on or off, but we've had the hiccups in the past, is getting stuff to the board in enough time that we can review it. So I think where this would be successful is doing exactly what Anthony said and then having that document, right, from the engineers in front of us and both proposed waivers at least, I would say, a week to ten days before.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's, because that's going to be the huge. We need a list of waivers in, in our end and forwarded to council. I.
I mean, you could tell me, but I mean.
Well, I'd love to say ten business days, but that's gonna, that just affects when we schedule the next hearings for.
Right.
Because your waiver list is going to be a lot better if you're putting it together after the engineers have met.
Right.
And maybe after the engineers have met and then you guys have decided what you want to comply with and what you want to argue against. So, but yeah, I think ideally.
That's the, it's getting that done and then getting the waivers. So it's sequencing.
It's sequencing and allowing for a little wee way in event that there is some hiccups. With sequencing, so my, my recommendation, I couldn't agree more with everything that you said. We're thinking the first week in March is the timeframe that we would request and think that we can do it. It's feasible.
The first week in March. Full week or?
For a hearing.
Yeah, well, that's when you have to do documents.
Like the sixth, the week of the sixth.
That's right. We'd be looking at Wednesday or Thursday, right? Select boards enter from on Tuesdays.
Select boards in on Tuesday, the sun, it's open on Wednesday, planning board is in on the night. The planning board has two big meetings Monday night, so.
So we're looking at Wednesday, March eighth.
Inseparable certainly.
So on the Merrill side, we'll, ideally, I'd love to see over the next week South Coast has some time to prep their information, maybe even send some stuff to Merrill, and then I'd like to see you guys maybe the week after that have your meeting or Zoom call to go over everything to the extent you want to boomerang back again that week or the next week, but two, three weeks from now, I'd love for the engineering portion to be done and then give your side another week or so to work on your waiver list. And then you're getting it to us by, we were at March eighth. You're getting it to us by the middle of the last week of February.
That's certainly doable. So February twenty-second would be my target date.
Yeah. Just you know, this stormwater and septic is hugely important. It's this, if this board is, is making decisions on that, it's, we've all failed. I, I want, I want to know just where Merrill thinks you should be building one thing or not building something and where you guys disagree. I just want us to rule on that delta. And then to learn as we need to about that delta.
Wouldn't it be nice if we didn't know about this?
I, I don't think that's out of the realm of possibility. I expect they're going to come back and say, yeah, it would be better if they did this, but of course they're not going to be able to do that because they only have their property lines. To the extent you need help getting the attention of DPW or SPD, please let Janine and myself know and we are happy to be of assistance there. Do you have anything else? With two weeks to look at the waiver list, yeah, I want to be moving for a vote at the next hearing. Yeah.
Yeah.
We should be able to do that. Bob, anything else?
No, for me.
Turning, try tag anything other than yeah, could you do us the favor of putting an extension through March eighth? In, in writing emails fine over to Janine, just so we have the file.
I'm doing March eighth for the hearing. March, the final action decision maybe, is that?
Yeah.
That's better, great, thank you.
Do we do, do we do written?
Oh, we do both. We got, we got.
You're not alone.
Oh, yeah. 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 Unless we have anything else, I'll make a motion now.
No, 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 I think he's just going like this.
I'll make a motion that we continue this hearing to March eighth. At seven PM here in the select board hearing room. All those in favor? Here we go.